Twenty-third and ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finnoukken?
Here.
Lash?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Naylor? Baker?
Here.
O'Leary?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Seven present?
Thank you. Alderman Naylor contacted me earlier today, apprising me that he is out of town, will not be present for this evening's meeting. I would ask Officer Pullos to come forward and may ask you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, you have before you the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carrot. No public hearings this evening. We do have notified the Kish Health Systems Hospice will be deferred due to an illness, is my understanding. Thank you. Moving to the Earth Hour proclamation, Saturday, March 28, 2015. Whereas, Earth Hour is a global movement encouraging individuals, businesses, and governments around the world to take positive actions for the environment by switching off their lights for one designated hour. And whereas, Earth Hour aims to show the actions that people, businesses, and governments worldwide are taking to reduce their environmental impact. And whereas, the highlight of Earth Hour will see the world's most iconic landmarks go dark for one designated hour in a global celebration of their commitment to protect the one thing that unites us all, our planet. Therefore, I, John A. Ray, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Saturday, March 28, 2015, to be quote "Earth Hour" unquote, and call upon the residents and businesses of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, to observe the occasion by turning off all non-essential lighting during that hour. Signed, John A. Ray, Mayor. I would ask Director Moore to come forward and receive the proclamation. Moving to Artigra Parade Presentation. Dana Stover is here this evening. If you could come to the podium, Dana.
Thanks. Mayor, before I get started, I have some DeKalb flyers. Would you be okay if I had them?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jane.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for allowing me some time to talk a little bit about Artigra Celebration, the first annual, we hope, celebration of the arts for NIU and the City of DeKalb. Just a real brief history of how this event came to be born, if you will. My husband, President Doug Baker, and I have installed student art at our residence. And last spring, we had an art reception with art students and all the art faculty and some other folks around town, and it was very, very successful. Students loved showing off their art. And several of the people at the reception, we thought we needed to take this to another level, bring in more of the community. We have a lot of art and creativity in the whole city of DeKalb as well as NIU. And so, there was a small group of us that kind of came up with the idea of Artigra. The Steering Committee initially consisted of two of the School of Art faculty, Billy Geese, Cindy Hayer-Hines, Ellen Anderson, who's the Director of Special Events at NIU, and myself. And we started brainstorming, how could we make this a big community event, a big celebration? We brought in a couple additional people, two students, and then from the city, Jennifer Diedrich, to kind of guide us on what we may not know from the city point of view. I think many people express an interest in having more celebratory events, more creative events in NIU. There've been editorials in the Chronicle about this, and that's kind of what Artigra is meant to be, kind of a fun celebratory event for both NIU and the community. It's similar in spirit to something like Carnival or Mardi Gras. Even though it's an art event, it isn't exclusive to artists. It's a chance just for creativity. And it's a chance for everyone to kind of celebrate before summer. For students, it's the weekend before finals, a chance to kind of de-stress before their finals week. So that's kind of the history of the Artigra. So now, kind of in more, a little more detail about exactly what it is. If I can forward to one more. I seem to be stuck here. There we go. Okay, so, the art parade. The kickoff to Artigra, which is May 2nd, Saturday, May 2nd, the kickoff is going to be an art parade. And when we've been going around to different groups talking about this, because we certainly want everyone to be involved, all ages, all groups, students, community, these are some of the pictures we show them. Many communities around the U.S. have these kinds of art parades, and it's a chance just to dress up. Tales is thinking of bringing dogs, dressing up dogs. We're talking to some of the grade schools, getting little kids involved. And it's just dressing up, being kind of fun and creative, and whatever you want to wear. Sometimes it's musical instruments they're playing, sometimes it's a little dance, something along those lines, just something creative. So that's the parade. The route, we spent some time talking about the appropriate route for the parade. At first, the Steering Committee thought it should just be on campus, but we immediately discarded that idea because it's a community event, not just an NIU event, and we wanted downtown merchants to be involved, and so we kind of jettisoned that idea. The second plan was to have it totally, pretty much, on Lincoln Highway, coming up Castle Drive by the lagoon, and then ending up at the School of Art. We were unable to get that much of Lincoln Highway closed, and we learned that pretty early on, that that would just be too much. And so, the route we settled on, again, working at first with Rudy Espirito, and then later with Jennifer Diedrich, was the one you see here. Starting on about Third and Oak, somewhere by the library, at a parking lot there, coming up Third Street to Lincoln Highway, two blocks on Lincoln Highway, and then down First Street to Locust, taking along Locust until you get to, I believe it's John Street, and then down to College Avenue, and ending up at the parking lot by the School of Art by the lagoon. So, we know that's going through some of the residences. And we really don't want to be a nuisance to the residents, we don't want to be disruptive, so we're trying to identify ways we can inform the residents and maybe even get them excited and involved. I mean, our long-term vision is that someday, maybe, this will be like Pumpkin Fest, where people in Sycamore brag about being on the Pumpkin Fest route, and they get involved and decorate their yards and sit out in lawn chairs and have fun. I mean, we're not there yet, for sure. But that's kind of our hope, that it won't be seen as an intrusion, that it will be just kind of fun and special on their street. But we are trying to work, one of the Steering Committee members has some contacts in the neighborhood, we're trying to figure out how we can best approach them to make it as disruptive as we can. So that's kind of in play, and maybe through this discussion, some ideas will come that we may want to pursue about that neighborhood, and informing them and getting them involved, possibly, in the event. Oh, this is just a little bit more. After the parade, it empties up into the parking lot, as I said. There'll be a few post-parade activities. Those are still kind of being planned, but you see a few of them there. There'll be a photo opportunity. We're trying to get some food trucks. The only one we have for sure right now are Boy Scouts. There'll be some music there. But we immediately want to get people kind of done with the parade and post-parade and on to the additional venues that are that night. There's going to be a shuttle bus, three short little shuttle buses taking people around who want to be on the shuttle bus to all the different exhibition venues around town that are planning to have displays. We have, the NIU Art Gallery is participating. There are several art receptions in the School of Art, Fourth Street Gallery. There'll be the art reception at the President's Residence. The Egyptian is having a time arts display. It's kind of a light show with NIU students, a video kind of light show. And most recently, the DeKalb Library wanted to be involved. They wanted to show off a mural. They've recently restored some art and maybe even early tours through the new construction, if they're far enough along. But they wanted to be part of the schedule, and we've added them. So there'll be shuttles going to each of these spots. And there's also music going on that night. The Kish Symphony is part of this, is on the schedule. NIukulele, the Community School of the Arts Steel Band is playing, and that's on our schedule. Stagecoach is having a show that night. They want it to be in the parade, and 7 o'clock, they have a show. So we're kind of billing it as a full day of kind of arts and music and creativity. We've presented already to the Chamber of Commerce in DeKalb, and the merchants seemed very enthusiastic and receptive. We've presented to the DeKalb Area Arts Council. They were very receptive, gave us lots of good ideas, and even a small donation to help with some of our costs. We've presented to many student groups, and we're just continuing to reach out to everyone that we think might have an interest or concern, and just communicate what we're doing. So that's Artigra. And I'll, I guess, my cue is to welcome any questions, or is that how it works?
Yep.
Okay.
Dana, I'd like to thank you for the energy and enthusiasm you've brought to the, along with the Steering Committee members that have pulled together Artigra to the extent that we see the planning today.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for that effort.
Thanks.
And please pass on to the entire Steering Committee that appreciation.
I will.
Questions from council? Hearing none, and I think you've done an excellent job presenting this evening. Dana, I'm sure is available. If you have subsequent questions as we move toward the May 2nd event, please forward those to Dana.
Yes.
So thank you for the presentation this evening.
Thank you. And there is a website, I went by it pretty fast, but there is a website. It's on the flyer, it was on the poster, it came up the elevator, there's a poster. So you can certainly find a lot more information about the parade, about all the other events, and register your group for the parade if you want, all on the website. So, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Dana. Okay, we have several citizens registered for comment this evening. I'll call first, and these are on items that aren't on the agenda. And one citizen wishes to speak to one of the items on consent agenda. I would encourage their comment at the citizen comment point.
I briefly wanted to comment on the webpage redesign for the American Citizens for Disabilities Act. I did some research, I have relatives in the business. I said, "What should this cost?" They said, "$10,000 at the most, if it's a complicated website." I said, "Well, it's just a city website." I explained it to them. They said, "Probably less than $10,000." I see this was awarded with no competitive bidding, and I don't understand that. And it's five times or six times the amount. It should be, anybody that buys a service or a product and pays six times the amount, you wouldn't do that with your own money. Why are they going to do that with taxpayers' money? That I don't understand, and no competitive bidding. I don't quite understand the council approving that. I think, if it's possible, could this be, the contract canceled? Could this be revisited? You know, this is a blatant case of waste of taxpayers' money. I mean, you know, I can't sugarcoat this. This is, this is five times the amount it should be. This should not happen. I mean, this shouldn't have happened. I don't agree with this, and I think this should be, the contract should be terminated, it should be put up for competitive bidding, you know, and there should be a bid in of around $10,000 on that. That's excessive. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you to everybody who came out Thursday night to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. Thanks for letting us crash City Hall and use your space and get on television and on the internet. I've had lots of nice compliments from people around who were able to see that because of the broadcast. I thought I'd do something a little bit different, since I had all the questions and I kept all the questions. There were 77 questions total. Forty-three of them were for city alderman candidates. So I thought folks might be interested in some of the topics that came up. Seven people asked questions about City Hall and the renovation and/or new City Hall. Eight questions were about budget and taxes. Two questions were about the website. Two questions were about the city clerk's position, specifically reminding folks that it is a voted, elected position, not an elected, not an appointed position, and it used to be full-time. There were two questions about that. There were three questions about transparency, and one funny one about Herb Rubin, which I didn't think I should ask. So thanks to everybody that came out last week for that, and thank you again. We hope to continue working with City Hall and the League of Women Voters for Candidates Night. Thank you.
Kay, thank you for your effort, along with the League of Women Voters, in conducting their candidate forum.
I'll roll as fast as I can. I'm sure you're tired of hearing from me on this, but here it is. This is in regards to the website issue again. I've personally spent hours and hours and hours on this, and it's kind of like peeling back an onion, layer after layer with a lot of tears in between. The more I dig and the more information I found out, the more discouraged I get as to how this issue was handled. First of all, there's the settlement agreement. Oh, before I get into that, and I wanted to thank the mayor and Alderman Finnoukken for taking the time for me to explain some of the things that I, that were on my mind about this issue. I still haven't heard back about some of those questions. I don't know what we're waiting for, but it would be nice to get some answers to some of those questions. First of all, the settlement agreement, which clearly states at the very beginning that the city was informed about deficiencies with the ADA, non-compliance, way back in 2013. That kind of perked up my ears to begin with. And during this process of my doing a lot of research, I contacted our local people here at Ramp. That's an agency that we have locally that deals with ADA issues and helps out folks with disabilities. And they had contacted the city after the story broke in February, and they told me that they had contacted the city quite a while before that, and just a few days ago, I found out that they contacted the city way back in 2012. But nobody from the city ever responded back to them, which I find kind of annoying in a way, and I'm confounded as to why we have an agency that deals with those items, why we wouldn't share information. Then, the minutes came up. I was looking at the agenda today, because I wanted to come back and, you know, ask some more questions about this issue, and I noticed that the minutes for the February 9th meeting where this website issue was voted upon, and that they were being considered again tonight, and in a revised form. I have not had time to sit down and look at, the only way I can look at the original form and tonight's form, which is on your agenda, is to actually sit down and look at the video at the same time and compare. Of course, that takes a great deal of time, and I'm halfway through that. But they're substantially different. One is different from the other. But let me make a comment about the, that's one comment about the minutes. But the procedure and the way it happened, the way the vote occurred, and I shared this with the mayor and Alderman Finnoukken, when the original vote was taken, bless you, when the original vote was taken, after, you know, a lot of back and forth and this and that and the other, it was defeated. At that point in time, at that point in time, the original motion was defeated, the council should have moved on to the next item on the agenda. It did not, and I'm surprised that the city attorney didn't say anything about that. But later, as I was looking at this, and this didn't hit me until I was comparing these, the minutes again, the very last motion that was made, and it was made by Alderman Baker, to amend the resolution approving an amount not to exceed $50,570. And it was seconded by Alderman Snow. Well, that motion passed because Alderman Baker, you know, changed his vote because he wanted to see it a little bit less money, though I don't know why he, never mind, that's another issue. That motion was passed to amend, but there was no other motion after that, City Attorney Frieders. There was no other motion after that, because the original motion was never voted upon. All the council approved was the amendment. Only the amendment, not the original motion. That is totally improper. I mean, way out the window improper. As the other gentleman said, and I don't know this other gentleman, but I'm sure would like to sit down and talk to him, there are people in our community who could do this. There are companies available, and Alderman Baker, you know, you're the one that's always been talking about business, local business. Matter of fact, the whole council's been talking about keeping things local and wanting more businesses, and here we have a perfect opportunity to do that, and we don't. And, you know, we don't even at least give them the benefit of the bidding process, even a phone call, even if this deadline, which I take issue and question with how this whole settlement agreement was pulled together. And again, city attorney, I have asked through FOIA, I've asked the mayor, I've asked, and this, I'm asking others too, including the state's attorney, and including the Attorney General's office, and the DOJ. We'll do a FOIA there too, if need be. But this settlement agreement, I'm told, was probably done in executive session to give the city attorney the authority to sign that agreement. I question whether that item should have been, it's not the kind of litigatory type of item that should go into executive session, but if it did, and there was some approval and authority given there, at some point in time, that should have come back out into open session. It never did. And I don't want to hear from anybody from the staff that there is a certain authority that the staff has to go and sign things. I would doubt that very much, because you're talking well over $50,000, and I don't know if the council would have given that kind of authority within that context. So something is not right. There was a lot of pushing to get the council to do and to go in a certain direction, and I think there was some information that was withheld from the council that would have maybe made for a different decision. So this is very frustrating and is very, very disappointing, because it has given me a whole different view of some people that I had put a lot of faith in. And I don't see that coming forth the way it should. It's not right. It's not right. Something is deadly wrong about this, and you need to do something about it. John, I beg you, you need to do something about this.
Thank you, Bessie. Moving on to consent agenda, is there, let's see, first of all, does anyone wish to pull any item from consent agenda?
The minutes from February 9th.
Okay. February, just February 9th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll pull 1A out for separate discussion and vote. With that revision to our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let me ask for a voice vote. I'm sorry, roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnoukken?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve items on the consent agenda through none of this vote?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call on the approval.
Finnoukken?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Okay. Moving then to item 1A of the consent agenda revised minutes of the City Council meeting of February 9th.
Thank you.
Alderperson Lash?
I haven't gone back and compared to the video, so, and there was a lot of discussion that night, so I'm not remembering everything exactly. Looking at the amended minutes, I do not see where the original, the original motion was voted down. However, I was wondering if the point could be addressed that Bessie brought up about the resolution not being passed. I think the point that she was raising is that the minutes read that the resolution was amended, but that the resolution itself was not passed. Is that correct?
I think perhaps the language in the minutes is inartful in that regard. The motion that was made by Alderman Baker that ultimately was a successful motion, was a motion to approve the resolution with a not-to-exceed cap in it. It was not made as a motion to amend, it was not made as a mandatory motion to any previous motion that was on the floor. There was no other motion on the floor at that time. So the ultimate motion that passed was a motion to approve the resolution with a not-to-exceed cap of the monetary amount that was specified. So there would not have been a second motion required to approve an amended motion.
Okay. If that's the case, then we should probably have these minutes go back again, because that's very, very different from how they read. So if we could, you know, compare those to the video and make sure that that's in the minutes correctly, because I can see where Bessie's coming from and where that confusion is coming from, the way they read. Because the minutes say that the motion was to amend the resolution.
Okay. So, Alderperson Lash, from my clarity, you're asking for the sentence, "No vote was called on the previous motion," which was the original motion?
No.
And the movement made a new motion?
It is with respect to Alderman Baker's motion at the very end on page 13 of the agenda packet, and that would reflect that Alderman Baker moved to approve the resolution with a not-to-exceed amount of $50,570.
Okay. So, it's changing that from an amendment to an approve?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If that's what the, if that matches up with what the video-
The video reflects.
Alderperson Lash, I would note that two persons, at least two persons, to my knowledge, have reviewed the video of council meeting, Attorney Frieders and myself. Personally, I've spent time not on the entire February 9th council meeting, but certainly on the portion of the meeting that represents discussion around the motion. And with the clarification you raised, I feel these minutes accurately represent what transpired in that February 9th discussion. Other discussion? So, disposing of the item, Alderperson Lash, would you want that referred back for further revision?
Yes.
Okay. And is that understood, city manager?
Yes, if I understand, we'll have this listed on the April 13 city council agenda with the revisions.
Okay. Thank you. And Alderperson Lash, thank you for bringing forward your concerns. Let me see where I'm at. Yeah. Okay. Moving to items for separate action, Resolution 2015-25, authorizing a five-year lease agreement with T-Mobile USA in the amount of $30,000 for space on the East Water Tower located at 1216 Market Street, including land for equipment, right-of-way for ingress and egress, and installation and maintenance of utility wires, bolts, cables, and conduits. Is there a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Moore, did you have comment or clarification?
You know, I think this was in front of you. On January 26th, if you recall, we sent out an RFP. We sent it out very broadly, actually, to a lot of both cell providers and third-party location finder firms, third-party consultants that the cell tower providers use to help them locate sites appropriate for these tower locations. And as was discussed at the time, this is $30,000 a year, 30 years, with a 3% escalator every year, just by way of total value. The total value of this agreement is 1.4, a little over $1.4 million to the city. That is, I'll use the term "found money." This is, the benefit of having the water tower in the place where it was convenient to the cell tower providers allowed this to take place.
Do we have other cell providers, towers? Are we currently leasing any space in our water towers to anybody else?
Yes, we have one on the Dresser Road Tower, and we have one other on this tower.
Thank you.
So, if you know a cell company that wants to come locate here, we would love to speak with them.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. Resolution 2015-26, authorizing an agreement with State of Illinois not to exceed the amount of $240,000 for the purpose of a cooperative purchase of 3,500 tons of road salt for the FY 2016 snow season. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
TJ, could you just bring us up to speed with what this resolution entails?
Yes, thank you very much. It's kind of an appropriate day for this, which is what are, hopefully, our last gasp of snow here. We're already thinking about next year and what we're going to do for next year's season. What you have before you tonight is basically the authorization for the city to take part in the collective bid program that will happen for next season's salt. So, this is next year's road salt that we're talking about. However, I would like to point out something that I'll call a Scribner's error, although I'll admit right away that I was the Scribner. It's probably not most appropriate to say in the not-to-exceed, or not-to-exceed 240,000, because we're not actually authorizing, A, we don't have that budgeted for next year, so I can't, you can't authorize anything that isn't budgeted. But in addition to that, we don't know what the bids are actually going to come in at. So, this is really an authorization with the State of Illinois for the purpose of cooperative purchase of 3,500 tons of road salt for the FY 16. There's no real dollars attached to it. Those dollars will come later, probably in August or September. So, for the purposes of making the motion, maybe leave that part out.
I would amend my motion to not exceed an estimated amount of 240,000. Not for-
If we just-
Remove the exceed and say for an estimated dollar amount of 240,000, which is an estimate.
The actual purchase will return at a later date. So, you can either do that estimate or base it on the tonnage. Either would be acceptable.
You'd prefer to word it as an estimate of 240? Or if we just withdraw the clause not to exceed the amount of 240,000?
I would definitely remove the not-to-exceed and just say-
Approve an agreement for the purpose of a cooperative purchase?
Yes, that's right. Let's just remove the dollar amount entirely and approve the agreement. That would be my motion.
And how about the second?
Second.
Okay. Other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Ordinance 2015-15, publishing the official zoning map of the city of DeKalb. And this ordinance is before us in first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, second? Moved and seconded. Discussion. I'll ask Principal Planner Heinlein to address this.
Certainly. Just briefly, as we're required to do every year, before you this evening is the city's official zoning map. This item was taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 11th. They recommended a unanimous approval of the map. For you this evening is that map. Staff concurs with their recommendation.
Okay. Are there questions of Planner Heinlein? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Thank you. This will come back to us in our April meeting then?
Correct.
For a second reading. Thank you. Moving to communications, Alderman Jacobson?
No report.
Alderman Fenuken?
No report.
Alderperson Lash?
No report.
Alderman Snow?
No, no report.
Alderman Baker?
No report.
Alderman O'Leary?
No report.
City manager?
No report.
City attorney?
No report.
Assistant city manager, Happenstead?
No request.
Chief Lowry?
No report.
Chief Hicks?
No report.
Director Haley?
I just wanted to say our next Finance Advisory Committee meeting is April 2nd. At 6 o'clock, we'll be discussing the new purchasing manual. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you. Director DeVita?
Hi, everyone. A couple things. Derek is processing an update to the UDO ordinance, and he will bring all four chapters back on April 13th. Three of the aldermen have already provided input to him. So, if you have any other comments, please give Derek a call. Thank you for your work. And there is this Wednesday, on the 25th, at Planning and Zoning, there'll be four items on the agenda. The Old Crest Expansion, University Village renovations, and the request for zoning compliance. Ariel Reese of Hometown Skate Shop is looking to do a public skate park within the Fargo Theater, and part of the building that had been warehoused has an industrial zoning to it, so it needs to be rezoned CBD, and that request is on the agenda. It makes sense to do so. The rest of the block is. And then also, there's a cell tower request for Barbara Green. On the April 13th meeting, Derek will have the UDO, and then we will also have Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies here to present the second phase of the housing study. So, we'll have that update on the 13th. And then finally, myself and Tom Guthrie, excuse me, Greg Hoyle of the Fire Department, and Steve Tulumis from Safe Belt attended a meeting in Rockford last week. Rockford is looking at doing an update to their building codes, to all of them, to the 2015 ICC codes, and they've reached out. First, they started with Winnebago County. At the meeting last week, there was representation from nine counties and 35 cities, and they're looking to do a unified update of the codes. And at this point, we've told them we'd like to learn more. We don't know if we'll follow through. I've talked to Ken Anderson from the DeKalb Builders Association, and they'll walk through the process with us. We would only want to do something if it was something that our builders were comfortable with and if it met our needs as well. There could be some benefit to the building community. If it was the same code across all the cities, it would be easier for them to bid and project jobs. So, we'll look into that.
Thank you. Director Moore?
Good evening. With the Earth Hour proclamation tonight, I thought I would bring up in the meeting itself that the city received a grant. And unlike normally when you hear grants, you think of monetary amounts. In this case, we received over 200 occupancy sensors, so motion sensors, for light switches. They're actually light switch replacements. And these are put into rooms that are conducive for that sort of device, and it guarantees that the lights are turned off. They come on when they're needed, they turn off when they're needed, and we're going to be putting in more than 200 of these around the city. And this was a grant through the, let me try to say this right, savings through an Efficient Products Program. And it's an Illinois Energy Now program. And we learned about this through, actually, city manager Gora. So, I just wanted to say that over time here, we're putting them in. Police station already has them. So, they were kind of a leader in that regard. But we're putting them in all the fire stations, the public works buildings, and we're trying to put them in here into the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Engineer Liskowski?
No report.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to move to executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C1, and to discuss collective bargaining as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C2. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven I?
Okay. We will then move to the large conference room.